Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 15, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Gueh, will you please take the role?
Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Eads?
Here.
Mr. Wodiska?
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. All right. I have two petitions this evening for items not on the agenda. It appears that, well, the first one is on Railroad Avenue, and this is Julie Harrison. That's you. You may come up and address the Planning Commission. Please state your name and address, and you're given three minutes to tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, I was in the wrong location. My name is Julie Harrison, and I live at 1220 Ellison Street. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the inherent problems in the design intended for the railroad condominium cottages. Speaking of wrong location, this is the wrong location for this project because of the scope and density. Another reason it's the wrong location is because it's at the end of a narrow, dead-end street that has no parking because it is a fire lane. Also, the site is oddly shaped like a skinny triangle, which does not lend itself to good design. The developer's plan is money-driven, meaning he is motivated by potential profit and not necessarily what's best for the street, neighborhood, or community. If you look at the plans, you'll see the architect has designed the condominium cottages just six feet apart when legal zoning in an R1 district is 30 feet. Those are just numbers on a piece of paper, so I decided to bring a tape measure so you can see what 30 feet is. Now, we're going to go down to what 6 feet is, which is what the proposal is. That's 6 feet. 6 feet is a very small distance. Next, the parking plan is completely inadequate for the site. If there are 10 cottage condominiums, each one has two adults living there, that's most likely two cars each. That means 20 cars, plus, of course, guests, maintenance workers, et cetera. Do the math. An appropriate amount of parking would be 25 spots. Their proposal's for only 13 spots. That makes for a very interesting game of musical chairs every day. The closest legal parking is on Fowler Street, which is a football field length away. Speaking of a football field, that's the length a resident in the furthest condo cottage would have to walk to access the carport, trash, or even bring in their groceries. May I remind you that the target audience for these condos is people 55-plus. I have reached out to the realtor for the project and met with her. She's a lovely person. I gave her a drawing I did of another design idea that provided more parking and clustered the cottages in a pinwheel design. You should all have a copy of this. I asked her if there was any room for compromise on the number of units or the parking. She indicated there was not. Last, the neighbors and I continue to be very concerned about stormwater management. The architect's plan showed easement through Ellison Street. The neighbors are not granting this easement, nor are they required by law to do so. That means railroad must drain another way. I spoke with the city's liaison for environmental impact, Jason. He indicated that the builder would have to construct a pond to capture the rainwater. The pond would be about the size of two cottages. This pond is not on their drawings. We would like to formally request the developer be required to conduct a full soil erosion-water runoff study before a vote is taken to make sure there's no impact on the current residents' properties. Keep in mind, any decision you make tonight regarding this land, you might be thinking about it for half an hour, maybe even all day, but this is going to impact me and my neighbors forever going forward until we sell our houses and move somewhere else. So we'll be the ones to deal with parking, the traffic, the water runoff, whatever's built there. Please think carefully about this before making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't think we're making, just to clarify, we're not making any decisions tonight, right? There's nothing on, this is not on the agenda. There's no decisions made tonight, and we're not even really formally addressing it or talking about it tonight. But thank you. All right. Just wanted to.
The next speaker is Matt Bella, and I believe you're on the same topic.
My name's Matthew Bella. I live at 2506 Fowler Street in Falls Church, and I just wanted to educate you guys a little bit. I looked online at some of the cottage regulations in Washington State and in California, and they've been doing it for years. It seems like over 10 years, each place. They had some really beautiful designs, but the one thing they had, really laid out really nicely, was a couple pages of regulations for the cottage industry in these pocket neighborhoods. And the one in Washington State, I mean, I thought it was just unique because his plan, it wouldn't fit this map at all. It fails everywhere. It fails on size, it fails in parking, it fails in this neat thing called common space, where all the houses share. It's, all these regulations, the common spaces were like a grassy area where they can, I guess they can do cookouts, they can hang out, and do stuff, a lot of recreation. It's around 3,000 square feet, and it fails in setbacks. So I thought it was just, it was unique. I didn't want to just think just one example of Washington State. So I then looked in California. In California, this one is from Fresno, and it failed everything again. Everything from size to setbacks to parking. I mean, it didn't even, it's not even a pocket neighborhood compared to these rules. And they really make sense, and if you look at them online, they're pretty, and they make a lot of sense. And it's somewhere I would want my parents to live at, but the one they submitted doesn't meet any of the regulations. And these guys have been doing it for, I think it's over 10 years, and they thawed it out. They have rules about guests coming, rules where the windows face. It makes a lot of common sense. They have it for size. They have some for 800 to 1,000 square feet, 1,000 to 1,300 square feet, nothing for 1,500 square feet. But even in these different sizes, they have regulations for parking too, and for setbacks. And it's something that I think you guys should be educated on, so you could see how their plans compare to the ones that they've already thawed out. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further petitions for items not on the agenda. Do we have one more you want to add? All right. There's still time. So just state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Sure. Okay. Candace Dematias. I'm at 2509 Fowler Street, and I wanted to comment on the proposal for the railroad cottages. And I just caught the end of my neighbor Matt Ballow's comments, so I apologize if this is repetitive. But one thing that I noticed is that in listening to the Planning Commission previously, and then looking back through the notes, that several of you are concerned about existing developments, people tearing down houses, building to the extent that they can by right in terms of lot coverage, in terms of maximizing the size, and, you know, just meeting the bare minimums. This proposal does the same thing. It may be on a smaller scale, but they, you know, the houses are, proposed cottages are six and a half feet apart. It may meet standards for the fire code, but that certainly is tight by anybody else's standards. And setbacks isn't just about fire code or safety, it's also about aesthetics. They're also maximizing the square footage. It's 1,500 square feet. If you look at the other cottage communities, even the ones on the list that the city suggested that people look at, there's only one that has 1,500 square feet, and they're also, in that community, they have a range. They range from 800 square feet to 1,500 square feet. So it's not just all maximizing. They also, in this development, minimize, meet minimum standards. They minimize the number of parking spaces, for example, and just barely meet that standard. They minimize setbacks, you know, six and a half square feet, six and a half feet is pretty small. And then also, it's the minimums around the edges as well. This is the first out of the gate. You're setting precedent, so it's important to really take your time and look at this critically, and is this the right plan, right location, et cetera. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, everyone, for their comments. Yeah, I mean, we're going to be dealing with this issue going forward. I don't know when it's on the agenda next. But it is something that certainly, it looks like perhaps on June 5, we'll be having a work session on it. So that's not actually a meeting open, I mean, it's open to the public, it's not one where people are making comments, but people are willing to, are certainly willing to attend and watch, as most of our viewers seem to do, our fans do, is watch on TV.
You're a fan.
A fan. So it looks like, tentatively at this point, June 5. So thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is old business. We don't have any of that. And then new business, the downtown Plaza Park presentation and update. I believe we're going to hear a presentation this evening. Get some pretty pictures.
Set it up.
Well, I can reach this here. My name is Kim Callahan, and I'm the, I'm the city CIP project manager for the downtown plaza project, as well as the Big Chimneys Park project. So I'm here tonight to give you, mainly to give you an update on the downtown plaza project, show you the updated designs, and just hear some feedback before I submit for site plan at the end of June. So hopefully I can kind of address any comments before we submit for site plan. Once we get through talking about the downtown plaza and answering any questions and comments, then I'll give you a brief update on the Big Chimneys Park project, which is a little bit further behind in design than this project, but I thought since I was here, I'd give you an update on what we've done to date and the schedule going forward.
Excellent.
So we'll start with the downtown plaza. So the city owns a parcel of land in the 100 block of West Broad Street. On this graphic, we've got Washington Street, Broad Street, Maple Avenue, and Park Avenue. The city parcel's outlined in red. To the east of the city-owned land, we have the Hot and Juicy Crawfish, the Little City Creamery, and the, you know, building. And then to the west of the site, we have the Hunan Cafe, Dogwood Tavern Building and the CVS, as well as the alleyway that runs in between the Hunan Cafe and the city-owned Got a survey of the existing site. I just wanted to outline the entire parcel in red. It's about 24,000 square feet. The area is improved mainly with asphalt parking to the north of the site. To the south, we've got planters with trees and brick planter walls. A couple images of the existing site. I'm sure you're familiar with it, but the first picture is looking east towards the existing commercial building with the Unity Club entrance in the background, and the planter walls and the trees. We're not going to be impacting the existing street scape or the existing sidewalk. The new plaza will start at the edge of this planter wall. The next picture is looking west towards the alleyway and the Hunan Cafe building. And then the bottom picture is standing in the parking lot, looking out towards Broad Street, just showing another place where people tend to sit in Congress Park now. I believe right now there's a couple benches out on the street, and it was apparently packed on Sunday with, for Mother's Day, with people sitting out waiting for the Hot and Juicy Crawfish and eating ice cream, so it was already being activated without the new plaza. Hopefully, once we get something a little bit more attractive in there, we'll draw even more people. The plaza will actually, it's not going to take up the entire city parcel. The north end of the site will remain as is. It's the south end of the site that we'll be demolishing and improving with the new plaza. We'll be getting rid of the circular parking area and the planters and the trees that front the streetscape on Broad Street. And the edge of the plaza will come to the edge of the existing building where the Hot and Juicy Crawfish is, and then there'll be additional parking that are in line with that awning where there's currently parking. So the city-owned parcel of land is in the core entertainment area of the downtown Falls Church Planning Opportunity Area, which was approved in June of 2014 by City Council. This is taken from the POA. It's showing the core entertainment area outlined in yellow. Again, we have Washington Street, Broad Street, Park Avenue. The city-owned land is outlined in this magenta. So it's shown in our comprehensive plan and in the Planning Opportunity Area as a plaza, a plaza that can stand on its own and be functional, but that can also potentially be a gateway for a future, larger, expanded civic space plaza area if that comes to fruition. In addition, it could be a great pedestrian way between Broad and Park if this plaza design comes forward. So the city's Economic Development Authority saw this land as kind of an underutilized portion of city-owned land, and did some of their own work to come up with some goals and objectives for the project, as well as did some initial preliminary designs. And based on their initial research, they thought the goals of the project should be to activate downtown Falls Church, kind of engage the community, provide a flexible design that could be used for many different activities, not just one function, and also allow for that future open space expansion, and to just, in general, support local businesses. If we can get people to come downtown for functions, and they're more likely to visit the local businesses in the area, like when they had the Mardi Gras parade, there was all kinds of people that came down for that, and then after that, all the restaurants around the area were full. So if we could have more, more activities like that that bring people downtown, it would help support the local businesses. 2016 EDA voted to provide funding to the city for design and construction of this project, and the City Council approved this funding as part of the 2017 to 2021 capital improvement program. Before we started on design of the project, we staff released a survey to try to understand what would make people want to come to the plaza, what would be exciting to people. And the main feedback that we got is that the features they want to see in this plaza were evening lighting, that was the most popular, an interactive water feature, and kind of integrated benches, built-in benches to provide a lot of seating. The reason, the functions that they wanted to see were really to see and hear performances, just to eat, in general, eat meals and snacks, and see children's programs and activities. As a mom of two small children in the city, I have that loop where you go from the community center to Cherry Hill Park to the library, and I can easily see this plaza kind of fitting in, in that loop of parents bringing their children into the city and spending time, as well as adults in the evening, if we have some evening lighting. So it could, it could fit all the demographics of our little city. But based on the information we got from the survey and close coordination with the EDA and the Recreation and Parks Department, we came up with a plaza design. Just to orient you, we've got Broad Street down at the south end, the existing walkway, got the existing commercial building that comes right up to the property line, the alleyway that's privately owned, and then the Hunan Cafe. The park has two main entrances. The main, one main entrance is off of Broad Street, and the area off of Broad Street will be paved with the same brick that the sidewalk is to kind of draw people into that space and kind of mark it as a public space because it's going to match the existing sidewalk brick. And then as you move into the park, to the right, we have a stage area for small performances, but it's also a multifunctional space. It's not just for performances. It's only about a foot high, and it'll probably be paved in a different type of paver than the floor, but when it's not being used as performances, you could put tables up there, you could still use it for seating. And we, the shape of the plaza is circular, and it's defined by the green planting areas creates this circular shape, the planter areas, one along Broad Street, one that comes up along the alleyway, creates the rest of the circle, and then one that creates the border with the new parking area to the north. The center of the main plaza area, this is the widest portion of the paved area, and that was done so that it's immediately across from the stage, so if there are performances there, this is where the bulk of the people could hang out and enjoy the performance. As I mentioned, the Unity Club entrance is immediately adjacent to the plaza, and we've created a green wall and a chalk wall to give that commercial building its own separate entrance from the plaza. And it's also another way to activate the park, to give people something to do when they, when they come to the plaza. You'd have to change up the messaging on the chalk wall to make it different, so people want to come back and see what's going on with it. These smaller tables up here were thought possibly as game tables with the integrated chess or checkers tables into the, built into the tabletop. Also have plant, trees planted around the edge to create that serpentine shape. And then the secondary entrance is off of the parking lot from the north of the site. Now, we're still working with Mr. Shinsky, the owner of the alleyway, to negotiate use of that alleyway. I don't know if any of you noticed, but we have barricades up blocking access from there. I've been talking to him, and he agreed to let me shut that alleyway down for the month of May to see how it impact, as a test case, to see how it impacts the businesses, because his concern is that it's going to hurt the Hunan Cafe, and they're not going to get as much business because that's blocked off. So I said, well, let's try it out and see how it goes. He did agree to letting the city use the alleyway and blocking it off during special events or possibly weekends, so he's willing to work with us. It's just a matter of how much we can, we can use that alleyway. Because we don't have total control of the alleyway, we still need kind of an edge that separates the plaza from the alleyway, below planter wall. So you'll still have that visual connection from the alleyway into the plaza, but there is a separation. We have designed a smaller entrance so that when we do have bigger functions, I mean, we're using this alleyway for, you know, additional capacity. There is ingress and egress from that, from the alleyway directly into the plaza. We've, as I mentioned, we had to eliminate the parking spaces that are currently in this area, and we've put additional parking spaces on the north edge of the plaza, so we'll be losing approximately seven public parking spaces. The other feature that's important to point out is the DVP switchgear. We've tried to design, we can't move that switchgear, so we've tried to design the plaza around it. If you notice, everything is kind of pointing away from that switchgear, like all of your focus should be towards the stage or towards the chalk wall, kind of away from that, that switchgear. We also have a potentially, an interactive water feature in the center if we decide to go with that, with that feature, and potentially a fire pit in the back. That would kind of make it a four seasons plaza. In the summertime, you could have the interactive water feature; in the wintertime, you could activate it by having the evening lighting and a small fire pit. It's just a colored version of the site plan. You can see the planting areas and the different types of paving we're doing throughout, throughout the plaza. The first rendering is an image, is a bird's eye view, looking into the park from Broad Street. And I want to caveat this by saying it's still a work in progress. This isn't, these features aren't set in stone, but this is the intent of design, to have a wall here, a low paver wall, seating wall here with some planting. You can see the built-in benches, the open area, the entrance to the park with some seating along Broad Street, and the stage behind that, and the potential water feature in the background. This is the entrance looking into the park from the parking lot on the north end of the site. So you'll see the chalk wall and the green wall along here with the Unity Club entrance behind that. And this is a way to kind of activate that park and make it interesting for kids' interests by changing up our messaging on the chalk wall. Also, the focus should be towards the chalk wall versus the transfer, sorry, the switchgear that's located to the right. The view of the interior, the bird's eye view of the interior plaza, just plenty of opportunity for seating. We can see the built-in benches and the tables and chairs. This is where the majority of the people would congregate if there was a performance or an event. And this is the option with the water feature and the fire pit, just to show how, the difference between the two. Our next steps are to submit our site plan by the end of June. We hope to start construction early 2018 and be complete by the summer of 2018.
All right. Great. Well, that was very comprehensive. I have several questions. They might be obvious, but I'll let the other commissioners begin with what they saw here and what they want to comment. So, anybody? Melissa, I know you're ready.
Okay. So right now, currently, the alley is staying in there. You're just like looking at possibilities of blocking it sometimes for events or something? Is that what you're saying?
That's all he was willing to commit to at this point. I'm still working with him to try to see if we can get an easement and shut down that
thing. I mean, I actually want to keep it.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's. That is my interest 95% of the time, to get the Browns hardware into all of those places because of the direction I come from. But, so I like the alleyway. But what I was trying to figure out, and I think that when we work on the site plan, we need to see our larger drawing that's showing where these new spaces are backing into, and what's the clearance? Because when you come down the alleyway and then you have the spots near Dogwood, they are at an angle. And what I need to see is what's going to change the drive aisle flow here, because I'm kind of concerned that these new spots are going to be backing into a drive aisle.
Okay.
And that is not an easy, because it's a choppy parking lot, there's different owners, and the drive aisles aren't really clear. I think that at site plan, I need to see a much larger drawing that shows me what the flow in and out of these parking spots are, like where are they backing into? Are they backing into cars that are be driving by? How are people going to come in and out of those spots near Dogwood? Are we going to have to work with the owner to look at those Dogwood spots?
For what?
And we have that, but I think like I really need something, I would like to see something clearer on the drive aisles. And are the Dogwood spots going to be workable the way they are now? Or will we have to work with them to just adjust some of those Dogwood spots?
Sorry, let me go back.
Yeah, the one you showed was the one that, you know, the one that, the bigger photo had the clearest of it, but it doesn't, I think we just need to see what the conditions are going to be.
Are you, just to clarify, are you more concerned about the Dogwood spots backing up here, or are you concerned about the new spots backing up?
Both.
Both of them?
Both. I'm mostly, I'm concerned about the new spots, how they're going to back out. Are they backing out into traffic? And how clear is that view going to be for cars coming along if these cars are backing out? Because right now, those cars are in a little circular thing, and they're not backing out into a large drive aisle. So I'm just saying, I think we need to look at that and make sure that when these cars back out, they can back out safely. Do they have enough visual to know a car is going to be coming behind them?
Okay.
Because I'm not sure they do.
Okay.
Because of the way the buildings are. And then the Dogwood spots, I'm just curious, because, again, we're changing the way the parking is next to them, is, are the Dogwood spots going to be okay the way they back out? Because they, because you're kind of putting parking across, and so I think some of these across spaces are actually going to be closer than the current spaces. I may be wrong. I just want to see it.
Right, right. What we've done with the Dogwood spaces is we've actually seen how we cut the plaza area back, so the minimum drive aisle you need with angled parking in a one-way situation is 16 feet. We've given them 16 feet from the edge of their parking to kind of the edge of what we're building.
Right, and I think the main thing I'm trying to say, the current drawings aren't clear on all these.
Sure.
And I think that one of the things we do have to look at is how does that redo that? And then on the, I don't know, I just want, well, I'll ask this last, because I was just curious about this. But on the wall for the Unity Club?
Mm-hmm.
It looked like in the drawing, so there's like the little wall, and there's like another wall that looks like it crosses, like right here.
Oh, sure.
So are we basically blocking the Unity Club so that if they want to enter the park, they have to come all the way out around the parking spots, almost to Dogwood's porch, and to get into the park? Is that basically it?
Yes.
So we're basically blocking them from using the park easily?
We're not blocking them from using the park. They're welcome, they're, they can enter the park the way everybody else enters the park, through the two entrances.
All right, no, I'm just, because it just didn't seem like it was a very friendly, I get that you're trying to protect their entrance and give them their entrance, but it did seem like it's making it harder for them to utilize the park. But I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it. That's all I was asking. I was trying to figure out what this picture was for.
That's just a view into the entrance.
Because these buildings don't exist, and it seems to be a lake. Because these buildings don't exist and it seems to be a lake back here.
I know, I know. There's a little bit of architectural.
I, I would just, I would suggest not using this picture because it has no basis in reality.
I, I understand. The, the background is not ideal. I will fix that. It's a little bit of architectural license.
I know. I was like, I looked at it for a long time going, maybe, well, this, I mean, this is closer to what we have in the comp plan one day, but it's definitely not close to now. And, um, I don't know. I, you know, I'm not 100% fan of this project, mostly because we do have that area, you know, set up for redevelopment. And we, and we, in the area plan, we do leave that as a plaza, but we have no idea until we redevelop it if this plaza would actually work or we'll end up tearing the whole thing up in a future development. I'm also concerned about the plantings. Do we have things there that are gonna grow in that amount of sunlight? Because I've been in that park plenty of times, sitting on that wall, um, like, I don't know, all different times of the year. And there's no sun there most of the time.
Right.
So, we're showing a lot of vibrant grass and trees and stuff. So, I hope whoever you're working with, with the landscape, has really gone and looked at the amount of sunlight in there.
Yeah, we haven't selected the exact, like, species of plants we're gonna put in there, but we have landscape architects that will, that are qualified to, to put the right kinds of plants in there. We don't, what I don't want to do is put something in there that's gonna require a lot of maintenance. So, the idea is, is low maintenance, nothing we have to mow or constantly, you know, upkeep.
Right. No, no, I understand. And, and there's a lot of shade plants that can live in that section. And, um, and I mean, I'm not, it's, it's just not as lot of sun. It's not the two trees that are doing most of it, just because of the angle of the buildings and there's buildings across the street. There's a limited amount of sun. So, I'd like to see us put things in there that can live in a semi-shade environment. Because the reason we don't have a lot of things alive there now is people put in, they put in things that needed more sun than what's there.
Okay.
And so, I think that that's something we need to really look at. I mean, the project's really nice. My, my issue was that I just feel like this money would have been better off the land bank for future development. And so, that, I'm not against the project other than this money came from a land sale that we made that was part of the Rushmark project. And I would have rather see us buy new land to help development. But, you know, if we're gonna spend it, it's, it's a nice park. But, I'd like to see the flow better for the parking. I'd like to hear about what kind of plants are gonna go in there. I mean, have they done sunlight studies to see what kind of sunlight's in there?
We haven't done a, a shadow study. That's.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would just be, I mean, I don't know if there's money in it for that, but I think that that's a key issue that, how much, what the shadow is gonna be like in there for the plants they pick. Anyway, that's all I have.
Mr. DeJean?
Yeah. So, one of the, the things that I wanted to cover too was the shadow studies, which Melissa brought up. So, that, um, and you, you've made a note on that, right? Okay. I like the simplicity of the design. I think it's, it's a great design. And depending on how much the first design and the second one, I mean, I like both designs, but I think there's one with a water feature and one without, right? So, I'm curious to see how much the budget comes out with either one of those designs and which one we would be going with. I mean, I like the wa, water feature, but of course, if it's too expensive.
Sure. I mean, the, right now, the, the water feature is not currently in the construction budget, but that it's being designed as an add alternate. So, when we bid this, we'll get a separate price for that water feature. So, we can see how much it was and how much it will cost to, to add that into the project. And if they, at that point, the EDA would need to decide if they wanted to commit additional.
Yeah. And then, uh, one minor thing. I think regarding furniture, I don't know whether it's in New York or not, but there's a park in New York where they decided to experiment with people not having fixed furniture and having people be able to move it around so that they can get, you know, they can have their own little gathering spots.
Right.
I'm, I'm wondering if that would be maybe as an experiment, when you, when you do this, is if eventually gets built, is to be able to move some of the furniture around? Maybe you can have some fixed ones, but, you know, have some movable ones so that, let's say if a family wants to have dinner there, you know, and buy their food from somewhere, they could put some chairs together and tables together and be able to, to eat there.
And that, that's exactly what we're gonna do. We aren't planning to have fixed furniture. The, the idea of this park is to keep it flexible so that it can be reworked in different ways. So, we had, the, the table and chairs that we do have planned are supposed to be, are going to be movable tables.
Okay. All right. And then, I think Melissa already talked about the alleyway. So, that's, I have to cross that off my list. I had the transformer in mind, but it's not moving. Cause I was gonna ask about whether it was gonna move.
It is, it is not. It's, it's a switch. So, it feeds several different transformers on that block. It's a, it's a bigger, it's a bigger undertaking than, than simply moving a transformer. So, it's, it's not possible for us to, to move that. Did you have an easement to force them to move it at the cost?
And, and design-wise, just looking at the holistic design of the, of the area, I know there was a study to put the farmer's market in that area at some point. How viable is, do you know if it's viable at this point?
With the whole farmer's market in that?
You know, to be able to, to redesign, redesign that parking space in the back. And I, I thought that would be a great, you know, a great thing to have so that you, we could have a linkage between the future farmer's market and this park.
Right.
Um, I don't know. I think it was on the comprehensive plan was to do that.
It is. Yeah. It was, it was, that market would, would have been not just in that plaza that was behind. It was like when we redo the whole thing.
When this whole larger kind of.
Yeah. Where, you see all that green space instead of parking?
Yeah. And I think that would create a, a really nice, you know, linkage between the two, two areas.
So, we're not, the, the plaza design that we have now, I don't think, doesn't preclude that from, from being able to connect to any kind of future park or plaza that we have behind.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Just a couple of thoughts on the nighttime lighting that you mentioned. Hoping you can look at, well, first of all, LEDs.
Right.
And secondly, the downward focused to limit the upward pollution. And then third, hopefully a Kelvin that's 3,000 or less. And if you're up to the 5,000 Kelvin, it looks like the fluorescent lights on a surgery operating table. So, the 3,000 and below, I'm sure you know, it's kind of a softer.
Okay.
Light that would be less harsh in, in the neighborhood. Just a couple of thoughts.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Krausner?
Just a, I think what would help, what Melissa mentioned, if one of the sheets of the site plan showed the entire lot so that you could see that circulation. I mean, I think, right, just show, and just show it in context. I think that would be helpful to see how, you know, this changes. I mean, obviously, you need the inset close-up of the, of the plaza itself, but if you had something that showed the entire city-owned lot, just to see, you know, where, I think that might provide the context that she was alluding to. I think, I think, I think my comments are mostly addressed by what others have said. I think, was the issue for the Unity Club, was that a, was that, was there any conversations with them? Was that a, obviously, it was a very deliberate choice to, to configure the plaza that way. And I, you know, was, was that something that was done after conversations with them? Or?
No, I, I, I do need to reach out. That's on part of my public outreach. I.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, obviously, I mean, you know, there are probably different schools of thought on what would make more sense. I mean, having it open out onto the, you know, their entrance open out onto the plaza, I mean, they may, they might think that's nice. I, I don't know what the city's objectives are as far as that goes and, and, you know, the, that, the use of that, you know, their, their club. But, but anyhow, that's something to, yeah, you should obviously talk to them before you get too far along just to see how they, you know, how they react to it. Cause obviously, it's a big change for them.
Sure. And, you know, their, their property line goes right along kind of the building.
Right. It's right on.
This is city property and I'm not, I'm not blocking their entrance. We're just.
No, no. I, I, right. It's just a matter of what, what makes the most sense, you know, for the, for the, the folks that, you know, the groups that meet there, what they feel. Maybe they prefer something like that. It's, you know, kind of more discreet. I don't know. Maybe they prefer that. But anyhow, it's a, it's worth talking to them about.
Yeah, sure.
One last thing. I think Mr. DeJean referred to, you know, moving furniture and stuff. I think, you know, there was a famous study that was done in, in New York like 50, 60 years ago called "The Social Life of Small Urban Spaces." And the gentleman's name was White. He was a sociologist who did it. And it was all about little, little spaces like this. It's a classic. I mean, it's, it's from the 1960s, I think. But, it's a, it's worth, it's worth Googling, "The Social Life of Small Urban Spaces," cause it, it looked at all kinds of ideas about how to address anything, you know, public spaces that, at this scale, not large urban parks, but small plazas and courtyards. And one of the findings was that people like to move furniture around. People also like water in an urban setting where there's noise because it helps to calm, you know, it, it helps to act as white noise to block out traffic and other sounds of, of a busy urban place. And so, but anyhow, there's a number of recommendations that came out of that. But, it's really a classic and a lot of the ideas are still very valid today. So, worth, worth a Google. Yeah.
Ms. Hockenberry?
You want to go next?
No, I don't think.
You raised your hand. He did not. So.
Oh, he didn't? Well, well, bad boy. Anyway, uh, yeah. Um, I know you've had a lot of trouble getting together with Unity Club as far as meeting with the person who runs it over there. And I know that's a great concern. And also, just along that line, just for a note of interest, the Parks and Rec group, they're working on a no smoking in city park sign. And of course, that would be our biggest problem is to have smokers in that park, you know, when, when we want to use it for a public park. So, that's gonna be rather difficult. Your idea for game tables, I think, just that really, those are so popular in parks and maybe more than just one for chess and checkers and things like that. Cause that just brings really a great gathering idea. You said you were, had worked with Oshinsky, but what about the owner of the properties down to the east of this park?
Have I spoken to all the property owners?
Yeah.
I've reached out to them. I've, I've spoken to most of the property owners on, to the east on that block. I haven't made my way all the way down now that we have more of a concrete design. I think I showed, when I originally spoke to the immediate neighbors, I had the old designs done by the EDA. But, now that we have a kind of an updated schematic design, I'll, I'll reach back out to the, to the surrounding.
And doesn't Jeff Jefferies own those properties now? Which, you know, he just originally owned the Q Music and the Music Building on Park.
He owns the Unity Club building.
Okay. So, you know, that would be really good. He's kind of a local being. And to make sure you work with him. And then, uh, I'm gonna steal some of your thunder. In doing this, somewhere down the line, we have got to get a crosswalk across because people are constantly crossing over between the four Ps and across that, that first block of, of Broad there. And it's just really very, very congested. I know there's a lot of difference since I'm liaison to the EDA. I know there's been a lot of talk about the costs and everything along that line. The, you know, if we can't have the water park or the water feature, so be it. But, as for the rest of it, this is a really good design. And I would hate to see it value engineered so much that we put cheap materials in there and don't follow through with the design and to make it, you know, a special, special place. Cause the last meeting, oh, could we do without this? Could we do without that? And once you start messing with the design and value engineer it, it gets to be rather, I won't say, but not, not as, not good, not worth the money.
Exactly.
And that's the whole point. You want it to be worth the money with what you're doing or not do it at all.
Yes.
And I feel very, very strongly about that. Because just taking out a bit or piece here and there is just not good enough. And it's, it shouldn't be done. Cause I think it's got a good design, very good flow to it, good materials. I know they were talking about pressed concrete and everything. No. You know, this has gotta have, you know, the real, no, it's not gonna have solid gold. But, um, but I really do value the good materials and the good stone used. Cause stone is the best in this, in this kind of thing. But, without the water feature, so what? You know? It would be nice to have. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin, assuming you have thunder left, you may.
I just have a.
You guys some thunder left?
I have a little thunder. No, I was wondering, I think currently, there's a change in grade from Broad Street up to the parking lot. How's that handled?
A 4% grade change between the parking lot and Broad Street. So, it'll slowly, I mean, that's not a big grade change.
All right. So, the whole thing's just gonna be a slope? I mean, there, right now, there's a few steps up to the.
There won't be any steps. It'll, the grade change will just slowly make its way down as we get to Broad Street. The engineers are still working on the exact grading, but we don't, we're not anticipating any steps.
All right. And same thing down to the alley?
Correct. Yeah.
Speaking of alley, I'd be in favor of closing that if Oshinsky would be into it. I think it'd be a huge benefit to his businesses if he got to be part of the park.
That's safer. Yeah.
But, um, it sounds like we have a plan if he's not up for that. The switcher, whatever that thing's called, do we know how often?
Switchgear.
Switchgear. Do we know how often that thing like gets serviced and what that looks like? And is that gonna like mess up whatever landscape we have there twice a year? Or is it more like once every 10 years, somebody comes?
If there's a problem, they, they need to access it. That you have to have 10-foot of clearance on two of the sides and three feet clearance on the other two sides. So, we can't, we can't plant a tree right next to it. Our, our plan was to repaint it and plant some tall grasses. So, if those didn't need to be removed, it's easy to replant them.
Smart. Good idea. And then, the treatment on the Unity Club side, one question I have is like, if that is no longer the Unity Club down the road, is that, are we doing anything that's particularly specific to the Unity Club?
I think it's still a separate commercial entrance. It's its own building.
And then, that was my other question is, does that, since that entrance comes onto city property, is that sort of, that would have to be maintained? There's no other way into the, I'm wondering if, if the Unity Club moves on and that space gets redeveloped on the inside and that entrance goes away, then we'd probably want to do something over there. Cause it'd be weird. But, what do we anticipate?
It would just be a weird kind of wedge shape.
Yeah. With no door there. But, we probably anticipate that always being an entrance to something. I'm not familiar with the insides of that building. So.
Yeah. Well, it, it is designed so that, you know, assuming that that building is gonna be there for a while.
Yeah. That'd always be some, yeah. And then, um, to get my thunder back, yeah, I think.
Sorry.
Mike has something. Yeah.
You know, green wall, chalk wall isn't like a huge brick wall. It's not something that's necessarily that hard.
That could come down, down there. I don't know.
Come down.
Uh, yeah. To get my thunder back. So, I think a mid-block crossing would be huge, partially because, and this is maybe not your last forever, but the parking lot of George Mason Square is public parking and I think evenings and weekends. And so, certainly, that's, if, I'm sure nobody knows that, but if you park there, it'd be great to be able to walk over to the things on that side of Broad Street without having to go down to either intersection. I know that's not part of the scope of this project, but I sort of like the western entrance of the metro. I mention it every time I can get. And then, I would also support the notion of, I love no smoking in our parks. This is a park. You can't be smoking in the park. Hopefully, hopefully that won't be hard to do. It'll just be.
Well, I don't think, from my understanding in the state of Virginia.
We can't ban smoking in public parks?
We can't ban them in our public parks. But, we can put up nice signs that says, "Please do not."
Oh, well, that's useless. Um, all right. We'll have to change state law then.
But, that's what the Parks and Rec are working on, you know, compliance.
You can put 100 signs up there. If it's not illegal, it's not gonna stop people from smoking.
They're working us signs.
Uh, all right. Otherwise, I think it looks good. Good job.
All right. Thank you. I got a couple of questions. Just to start off, I think it does really look good. This is a very nice design and I like its simplicity and the flexibility associated with it. Just in general, I'm very supportive of the water feature. I appreciate that this is a cost element, but I happen to work right next to downtown Silver Spring and it has one of these water features and it is packed all the time in the, in the nice weather. It really draws the people because the kids just can't get enough of this. So, it may add some expense to it, but if done correctly, I have seen it. I see it all the time where it's just such a benefit to the activation of the area. Parents and kids alike want to, want to go to the park. So, everybody's sort of asked most of the questions I have. I got a couple smaller ones. I want to understand the chalk wall a little bit. We just touched on it a bit. Actually, the slide you were on prior, the number nine. Yeah. So, there's this piece that allows you entry into the Unity Club. And then, there's this secondary, uh, yeah. And I'm not sure what's going on there.
That is, if we do need, have a water feature, we need someplace to keep the equipment, all the pumps. So, this was a good space to kind of court, our architect kind of segmented off that piece as a place for equipment for the water feature. And if we don't end up using the water feature, it could be storage.
Storage. Well, that's, storage, I was gonna ask the trash. How, where are we planning on putting trash? And is there gonna be on multiple entrances or, yeah, the, the idea here is that people are gonna eat. And I assume there's gonna be.
Be trash receptacles. And Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for maintaining, will be responsible for maintaining it, which. for maintaining, will be responsible for maintaining it, which means they'd be emptying the trash. So, yes, so, you know, we haven't decided exactly where the trash receptacles will go. But, but you're right, there needs to be probably several opportunities for people to throw out the trash.
Yeah, I think it needs to be planned, because I think it's going to, if you just put it on Broad Street where we have lots of receptacles, I just don't think it's going to be sufficient to handle what the usage is going to be there. I skipped around a little bit, I'm sorry. I want to go back to that chalk wall again. About, how high is it? What's the height?
It's eight feet high.
It's eight feet. So it's really substantial. It's not a small piece. Okay, that's good. Then, I didn't understand that. And, we have seen this, you know, more than once. I was curious where the EDA was in terms of their general cost at this point. Like, what do we think? What are we thinking? Is it still the same budget? Which, is that $500,000 range? I just forget what the number is, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mike, please.
$1 billion.
Thanks. Hi, Mike Novatny, Chair of the EDA. So, we, I've previously authorized a budget of up to $550,000 from the EDA funds. Where we are right now is we're finishing up the design to bid. And, once it goes out to bid, we'll collect the bids back. We'll look at the base bids plus the ad alternates. If adjustments are required for the budget, then the EDA will take it up at that time. So that's, that's where we are.
So still the same number, but adding some flexibility in case elements come up, like the water feature and stuff like that?
That's right. And, and there's been a lot of discussion in the EDA about the different elements. We think it's a smart plan to try to bring some of these elements through as an ad alternate. So we can get the price, we can make a good decision. All of the feedback tonight, as well as from other venues, I think are going to be very helpful and very critical for deciding if it does need additional funding, you know, to backstop that, to support, you know, a design with the water feature, for example.
Great. No. And, I guess, oh, I just wanted to comment finally on the alleyway. On this particular picture, let me also say, I think if we can close off that alley, I'm very supportive of that. I think there's other ways to access the businesses that are close by. But, on this one, because we don't own it, and there seems to be some uncertainty, I was confused about the treatment or the color shown on this map. Are we proposing that we're going to pay for repaving it?
We've got an easement, and we could shut down the alleyway. The ideal situation would be if it was paved with pavers matching the part of the plaza. If we don't get an easement, then we can't really spend city money on private property to improve it. What would be that it would stay?
Okay. So this is like a combo picture. Got it.
If our deal situation happened and we could get the alleyway, we would pave it.
All right. Just real helpful. All right, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful plan. Really supportive of it. Thank you.
Move on to Big Chimneys?
Let's move on. Do we know what screen the camera is showing? Do you have, Ms. J, do you know when the camera's showing on the public? I see the two cameras up there, maybe, because she's using a laser pointer. And if she's pointing at this one, and they're showing this one, I just want to... Not that laser pointer? Oh, no, I think that's... If we knew, if it's not...
Whatever we get, the quality of our television station is, for whatever reason, compared to some of the other jurisdictions, the feed is pretty low resolution. I don't know if Channel 16, since we're on the topic, if Channel 16, if they're listening. I don't know, because if we're using a high-definition signal, it sounds like we're not. But sometimes it's really hard to see anything that goes on here. You know, the quality of the video tends to be pretty poor. I know. Especially compared to some of our neighboring jurisdictions, like the town of Vienna, town of Herndon.
With our ratings, I agree. It's shameful.
Just putting that out there, since we're on the topic.
All right, we're all set.
I just wanted to start, you don't, you don't have a copy of the survey, but this is the survey of the existing Big Chimneys Park, just to orient you. This is Annandale Road. And then, we have the Harris Teeter Garage entrance right here. And then, the Harris Teeter loading and unloading zone, as well as the new crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk across Annandale. The existing park entrance is off of Annandale, and the path kind of goes right through the middle of the park, towards a playground area for larger kids, and then the playground area for smaller children. And then, there's again, a couple pathways from the Winter Hill community that are not ADA accessible at present. And then, the path leads to the Shirley Street and one to the bowling alley. At the south end of the site is usually kind of a damp area. So as part of this project, we hope to fix that with some stormwater improvements. But, funding for the Big Chimneys project was also approved as part of the 2017 to 2021 capital improvements program. So we've started design on that. And I will bring up the concept. So we're just in the very conceptual stage of the design here, trying to figure out where the main components of the project are going to be. And, we met, we've been working with the Planning, Recreation and Parks Department, as well as a community liaison with the, with the Winter Hill community to make sure that they're on board with, from the very beginning. I designated a representative to kind of work with city staff on this project. So we've integrated her into this process. But if you look up at the screen, we're still, we're moving the entrance of the park, the main entrance of the park, to line up with the pedestrian crossing along Annandale. We also have two kind of sidewalks that lead, entryways that lead to the main entrance. People don't really want to, they're walking down the sidewalk, they're not going to want to walk all the way down and over. So to try to stop people from traipsing through the landscaping, we decided to give them pathways on either side of that entrance to show them. We thought that there could be some benches, some bench seating here for, for people that maybe wanted to, to just relax and hang out, but maybe not enter into the park itself. The main entryway for the park is thought of as this, it's a pavilion. And there would be a sign, a Big Chimney sign over the pavilion. And then, on either side of that, there would be enough room for two picnic tables on each side. So people could potentially rent out that for parties or for gatherings. One of the big things that the citizens wanted when Recreation and Parks Department did their outreach was to make sure that we maintain like a common open space for passive recreational activities, as well as just, you know, unscheduled, you know, soccer or kickball or whatever. They wanted to have some open, open green space. We pulled the path closer towards Bowl America. And then, these two circular areas are going to be where the play equipment is. We have the larger circular area for the play equipment for the bigger kids, and then, the smaller circular for the smaller children. We've moved the, we've shifted the path from the Winter Hill development slightly north. One, in order to save the, and also to be able to make this ADA accessible. We have been out to the site with the Urban Foresters, and she has kind of marked the trees that were, that were specimen trees that were worth saving versus ones that maybe looked good but were not healthy. So we've designed this plan around the kind of very important trees on the site. That's not to say that these are the only trees we're going to save, but we're designing the park around saving these trees. And then, on the south end of the site, we'll have potentially some, some rain gardens, maybe similar to the one at Lincoln Park, where the kids can walk through it and kind of run through the, through the plants. And then, we've maintained entrance off of Shirley Street with some removable bollards here, so that it can serve as a maintenance access. So that's really, this is, like I said, it's just the conceptual design. I thought since I'd hear, I would give you an update on where we are. We're continuing to work with our playground equipment provider to come up with different options for playground equipment. And we'll reach out to the community and get their feedback on what they want to see, what actually goes into the, into the play equipment. That should be done. We'll be reaching out to them, you know, late spring, early summer. I plan to submit, we hope to start construction in the spring of 2018 and be done by the, by early fall 2018. Any other concerns, or?
Got it. I thank you again. She said, I'm sorry, spring 2018 is construction?
I'd like to start construction.
And?
If you can expedite that, I will. But that's kind of my...
And completion in fall 2018. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any comments about this?
Questions?
Comments, questions?
Thanks. This looks like a great design. A couple of things. Right now, I didn't quite understand on, along Annandale Road, that's a berm right now. Is that going to remain a berm?
They're working on the grading. We, the thought was to cut that down a bit. And the trees along there, according to our forester, weren't really worth, worth saving. So, we haven't decided that. We're not going to completely level it. But the thought was to, you know, obviously, in the area where the entrance is, we're going to have to cut down the berm, because the berm kind of goes across here. So yes, most of that, that berm may be cut back. And that would provide entrance into the park. One of the other concerns that I forgot to mention was for children running out onto Annandale Roads, there would be some sort of fence or barricade here to stop kids from running out into the park.
And the other thing I was wondering about right now, of course, that you've got the Eagle Scout project up there. And you've got the history there. How can you, you know, not necessarily keep the Eagle Scout, but how could you perhaps design the pavilion so it could be reminiscent, or, you know, historically wise to the Big Chimneys?
Yeah, that's, that's something we're looking at as part of this next stage of design, is how to give that nod to Big Chimneys and provide that historical reference through, whether it's interpretive signage, or providing play equipment that kind of maybe mimics Big Chimney, or, you know, finding a way to make that pavilion, you know, have a nod to that era of, of design. That's something we're working on. We haven't quite figured out the details, but we know that's an important part of this project.
Right.
Is the historical component.
You're mainly preserving the, the history of that area, which is kind of important. And all, I'll be so happy when you get rid of the mosquitoes. That is one of the worst mosquito spots in the world. No. Do I need to go looking for more mosquitoes?
Anyone else?
I just, I guess I was thinking about the history part too. Am I, is it correct, then, the outline of the current cabin thing is going to be removed? That's there now?
Yeah. From my understanding, that's not really even actually where it was. It's somewhere...
Yeah, that's what I heard as well. But I just, I just wanted to clarify that that was out. How large, how large is this pavilion? Is this like similar to size as Cherry Hill? Or?
No, it would be smaller. The Recreation and Parks Department, at least the two wings of it, they were, they would be smaller, like, more like, what is it, Madison Park, where they have those smaller scale?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure, because with the wings, it made it seem like it might be a bigger one. That's why I wondered, so.
Yeah, I mean, over, the overall structure is probably larger, but the two components where the actual seating is, is not like Cherry Hill.
Okay. And I think I remember, most of these entrances exist now, right?
Yes.
There's nothing, no new entrances?
No, no, we're not creating any new entrances. We're shifting the Winter Hill entrance over a little bit to save this tree when we make this path ADA accessible. The community said they would work with us to, to realign that entrance, and they'd give us whatever to make that happen.
And then, where 17, the planted buffer, is there going to be additional plantings going in there? Or is this just, yeah?
Yes.
Because I was going to say, it's not really that much of a buffer in some places right now.
Right. The, yeah, so there will be additional plantings. That's part of the...
Okay, thank you. It is a very nice design, and it'd be nice to see some of that water dealt with.
I had one quick comment. And I have no idea if it's even an issue, but are you going to like have a plan for people that might ride their bike through the park? Like, either discourage them or encourage them? I don't know. Seems very like foot-traffic-oriented, which makes sense. But I'm sure some people currently bike through the park. I used to bike through the park.
So are you looking for?
Well, I just didn't know if there's like, hey, dismount to get through the park. Or, I don't even, that's what I'm saying. I'm not a park...
No, I hadn't, we hadn't thought, that's something that I could certainly do if we want to provide, you know, bike racks at different ends of the park. I know we were actually planning on one of the little city bike racks along, along Annandale Road. I was biking, that's all that we...
Cool.
Materials? What kind of materials were those?
Oh, we're, a hard surface. Most likely asphalt, but we haven't finalized that yet.
In terms of play area for children 2 to 5, this is the number 2 on your map. It's hard to see up on the screen, but right there. It says themed play events, events, themed play elements. What, what does that mean? I don't know what that means.
Like Lincoln Park is a theme, are themed play elements.
Okay. So there's, so there's going to be, like, this is just a marking of an area, but there's going to be real stuff there?
Yeah, there's going to be equipment there.
Equipment, okay.
Yeah, that's where, that's where all the, number 2 and number 3, that's where all the equipment is going to be. We just haven't, it's not shown on there because we haven't selected the equipment. We want to work with the community. We're going to come, similar to what they did with Cherry Hill, we'll come up with a couple of different options for the equipment. Hopefully, get feedback from the residents on what they want to see in those.
And, on the signage, I see signage, I don't know what we're calling, the south side by Shirley Street. I don't see signage on the north side or northeast side, the West Annandale Road.
There certainly need to, the main signage was thought to be the Big Chimney sign off of the pavilion. But certainly, we'll need some type of mark signage off of Annandale.
Yeah, I just definitely, to denote that it's a park and open to the public. I like that there's a water fountain there. I think that's great. I didn't actually think of that on the last presentation. If we're putting in a water feature, then putting a water fountain would be a great idea. And important, I think. And even if we don't have a water feature, I don't know what it takes to put a water fountain. But I had not thought about until seeing that here. And, I was, again, confused about the fencing. I see the number 15 on here, and it's sort of just floating in between the pavilion and the entrance. But what was the idea?
Yeah, we don't know exactly. We're working on what type of fencing, whether it's a split-rail fence or a wrought iron fence. We're trying to work that in as part of the design. But the, the idea is for there to be some sort of fencing along this side and that side as a way to just stop kids from running into...
So is the idea, then, it would be a fence that has, you know, one of these kid latches on it? I mean, all the, that kind?
No, no, just like a barrier, like something to slow them down. Lay them for a second before you can grab them.
Okay, all right. And this tree, 18E, is a, like, specimen tree? This is one of the ones that we really wanted to save?
Yes.
I did have a quick thought. Anytime we can put play equipment in the shade of anything, it's good. It's just right out in the sun. That's like terrible. A skin cancer, less pain.
I agree. I agree. Can we make a note that less sunblock would be... Okay, thank you. This is, this looks great. Great plan. All right. So, we are moving right along. That concludes our new business. There's no other business, which gets us to number 8, approval of minutes for the May 1st, 2017 meeting. Has everybody read these and have any comments?
I have a few comments. On line 248, I think I, what I remember saying is that the school layout does need to be worried about. So I want to remove the "not" at the end of that page, because I am concerned that we need to be thinking about what the school layout is before we decide if we're going to build the whole, on the whole 10 acres. And then, on the last sentence, that, that starts in the middle of 250, I don't know, I think, I don't remember saying this. I was trying to think what I would have been saying. And you should be limited in use. Well, maybe should not be limited, because I don't think they should be limited in use. So maybe on that 251, should not be limited would make more sense to me. And then, on line 261, I think I talked too much of this. I mean, that's what I... that's what I.
You were verbose.
Line 261, um, I, I think I, I meant to say may find, um, instead of that, that neither the University of Virginia nor Virginia Tech represents find value, I say may find value because I just don't think we know if they'll find any value in cooperating with us and we haven't made it clear. But I'm not sure that absolutely they're not going to. And then, this, I think, and, um, Chair Wadisca, you're gonna have to go with me, I think on line 287, we weren't talking about the land being sold at that point. I think we were talking about development, that it would be likely that less, um, I don't know, I just, I don't remember that statement. Do you remember saying something? Likely that less rather than more land would be sold? I don't know, it just, that didn't, I read that and I wasn't sure if I remember you saying that.
I don't recall the statement. I, I'm sure I said something similar. What I think I was referring to, I'm not sure what I was referring to honestly when I read it. Uh, I mean, I know that generally at that, what I was referring to on the projec, on the, we had gotten an update and it sounded like the land value was gonna be worth less than we had anticipated.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, but I don't really know what this statement is saying, but it doesn't, it doesn't offend me that I would say that.
I just wanted to check, cause I, I read it and I was like, ah, I don't remember you saying exactly that, but anyway. Okay.
Yeah, thank you for, I, I, it's, it's benign, really.
Yeah, I mean, how crazy.
It could be crazy, but it's not. Uh, yeah, Mr. Stewart?
Uh, two, two items. On line 50, uh, says school staff was not present. Uh, I thought we should add there that, uh, Planning Commission wasn't present as well at that February 23rd meeting. I think you made a point, Mr. Chair, that, uh, the design that was being presented at that point was news to you and I think it was news to all of us. So, might be good to just highlight that. And then on line 155, that whole section there, 54, 155, 156, there's a few words missing and, um, I can read it and then I have it typed out for you. So if you can just kind of see if this sounds okay. Um, Mr. Stevens observed that those using an automobile and traveling east towards the West Falls Church Metro Station do not want to drive on Route 7 and then left on Hickok if there is a back entrance to the West Falls Church Metro Station as described by Mr. Banks. I'd like to say I have that written down.
Sounds good. Uh, anything, anyone else?
Yeah, I, I have, I have one.
Nope.
Where is it? I just circled it.
I'll do mine while you're looking.
Okay, you do it.
Line 190.
190?
190. I question what the use of autonomous vehicles might be. I probably did, but we also have that on 168, 169. And I know I'm really obsessed with this, but I think I probably only brought it up once, so maybe strike it from 190. Or, or not, it doesn't really matter. It is, it is something I think about a lot.
Did, did you question at that point or you were just telling us what was autonomous?
Remember, it was something that saved the world.
Um, I finally found mine. On line 317, uh, yeah, I know our schools are unusual, but, you know, but, uh, could we change that to city schools, uh, are unique in their needs? And, you know, it doesn't sound very brilliant and, and suggest that future school buildings could be, could be vertical. Yeah, okay. It's just minor, you know. Thank you.
Got it. Anyone else? All right. Uh, would someone make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for May 1st, 2017, as suggested or as amended?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes for, uh, April 1st?
May 1st.
May 1st, sorry. As amended?
April 4th.
Yep. Uh, did you second it?
I'll second it.
Excellent. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain?
That would be five ayes and two abstentions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay. Planning Commission reports. Anybody have anything to report?
Are you gonna report on last Friday?
Sure.
You go right ahead.
Uh, okay. Uh, last Friday, we heard a presentation on the, the status of the feasibility of the school project, or the school research, uh, efforts to date. Uh, and the firm was Perkins Eastman and they ran us through a bunch of metrics about how our district or, or I should say our education specifications compared to local jurisdictions and in some cases some not so local, more urban types of locations. Uh, what was striking to me at least is that we were always on the high end of this analysis. Our edu, our, uh, our specifications as they are written have fairly considerable requirements. Some of it's confusing and I don't really ha, uh, to be honest, have a great handle on, on it. If that was a function of whether we were trying to plan for 1,200 students or 1,500 students, it was sort of a, a moving target in the presentation and I just don't have a good sense of it. But even so, I felt like we were still quite high on our, on our education specifications. And I think we're gonna get a, a sort of revised report in the next couple of weeks. Uh, I think sooner than that, but really come to more conclusions in the next couple of weeks, I should say. Uh, but it looks like it is not a simple task to fit all, really it's the playing fields and all the athletic elements, uh, combined with how we set up the school, where to put the school. It seems like, I heard during the meeting, but nothing's been committed to, that there was talk of four stories perhaps, um, that because of the field constraints, that going vertical to some degree would be, would work the best. It was still in the preliminary stage, so, you know, there's not so much to report. Uh, but sh, the consultant, can't remember her name at this moment, um, she was confident that we could fit in all of the elements we wanted. I'm glad to hear that because based on what I heard, it looked like it was gonna be a challenge. Uh, so that's it. Uh, we're, the process is well underway. They've collected the data. They've begun to think about it. Uh, but the presentation was missing many elements in terms of how that would work with the, um, what we're trying to do otherwise with the Economic Working Group and the 10 acres. Uh, it was still unclear whether we were gonna go with, uh, a new building entirely or try to salvage the other. Um, they had not considered, which I thought was really important and was brought up, about, uh, a proposal that did not include parking. Uh, the real ha, the real struggle in this is the parking, it seems to me, that, that if you, that, that requires, and I'm, I was gonna say two and a half to four acres, depending on how many spots you put in there. But if you are coming up with unique solutions, uh, whether it's under a field or whether, which is quite expensive, or if it's using the UVA, Virginia Tech lot that is already open or working a deal with Womata, um, there's a lot of parking over there. But this really seems to be, to me, the crux of the design, like how you handle that and how many spaces you need and how you provide for the teachers versus the students. Uh, so there's all still, uh, the, the complexity was, uh, significant and there's still a lot of questions to be answered, but I think we're gonna have some answers, at least, or their recommendation in the next couple of weeks. So that was positive.
Did they also talk about the, um, bus parking?
Yeah.
That's a big issue. We, but we have both buses and school vehicles that fill that whole.
So talk about it, uh, by acknowledging that it needed to be on site, yes. Where it was to go, we were not there for sure. But yeah, they, they mentioned, you gotta have a place for these buses. It sounds like we have 15 buses right now and maybe up to 20 if we have the increased enrollment. So, uh, all of these things really are moving targets as to what we think the needs are today versus a school that, you know, she used the term 100 years, kind of, kind of, just designed. So, there's a lot of moving pieces and also to try to provide some flexibility for what the schools of the future sort of require. So, lot, lot, lot going on in that study.
Yeah, and I think one of the challenges with like the ratios where they'd say square feet of athletic facilities per student is that even at 1,500 students, it's a pretty small school compared to some of the ones in the area. And so, if we get a competition gym, which is a certain size defined by the state, then that's like bigger than you would have for just 1,500 students. So there's some challenges because it's still the scale isn't super comparable to most schools. But, um, yeah, I mean, the main conclusion was that physically speaking, they weren't talking about budget or anything, you know, everything that we think we want would fit on the site, even if the 10 acres were, were developed. Um, but yeah, they were, they're not done with this study yet, so they didn't have so much specifics about location or whether or not you reuse parts of the old school or stuff like that. It's interesting.
Yeah, I thought at the most general level, the presentation kind of highlighted whether this is gonna be an urban school or a traditional suburban school, uh, design. So, that brings into the parking, the, whether we're gonna have 10 acres for commercial, size, location of the building. All of those issues I think are gonna be resolved based on deciding that issue.
Yeah, I think that's really a good point. And I mean, it's not, I think this is really in the sc, the school board's purview at this point, but it's really unders, I think it's for the community, again, for all those people watching at home. Uh, it's really for the community to, to, to voice their opinions about how urban versus suburban we are looking to be. Um, a lot of these issues get solved more easily if you are comfortable being an urb, a more urban school than less. And while at its current situation, I think that that might be a big leap to make to say, wow, we're gonna go more urban, even though I think the city is generally trending that way. But when you factor in that bordering it or 10 acres within the site are going to be set up to be more urban, I don't think this is such a stretch to think that, look, this space is gonna be activated in totally different way than it is now. And if the community is comfortable with something that's more urban, uh, then this becomes, uh, a much different exercise. And, uh, I, my read on it was that the consultant didn't have that direction at this point. They were, they were unsure. They were concluding examples of urban, uh, but also saying, well, we're sub, in a suburban area. Uh, so.
Well, I think that, I don't think anyone has a problem with an urban building in terms of it being, I think their problem is functionality wise, we still have teachers who drive. So we can't.
Right.
And we have them driving from places like Loudoun County where it's, you know, unless they're willing to get on the metro out at Reston, they're, they're going to drive. So I think that that's part of our problem. It's like, we don't want to alienate teachers by telling them all they have to use metro. So, so I think we can do an urban building, but we have a suburban parking problem, so we're just kept.
Yeah, I, I think the, the idea wasn't we would go with no parking. I mean, there's just a lot of parking capacity literally in the immediate adjacent thing. So the idea was, let's work hard to work out a deal. Like if parking is gonna screw everything up, can't we grab a couple hundred spots from the, literally probably thousands that are unused most of the time? So, um, but, but they were, I mean, you know, but, and I, I don't, and so I, so I wouldn't think we're going for a plan with no parking, but their point was like, hey, there's a lot of parking that's currently used by students, but is that really something that we need to?
Right, right.
Give up on other needs so that the students can park? I mean, it's not that far of a walk for a lot of students. Anyway, it's a much challenge. I just think that there's so much parking in the area that, and that, like, hey, autonomous cars in 10, 15, 20 years, it's gonna be a different scene. And if we've just designed this entire campus around 500 parking spaces, we're gonna feel like dopes.
I'm glad you got your autonomous parking, autonomous car comment in there.
But, uh, something I keep stressing, I still don't think everybody has a handle on after-school uses up there and the community uses and the number of activities that take place at night, which means that every single thing is packed. But, uh, as I even said with the transportation plan that came in the last time around, I don't think they had even considered any nighttime usage up there. And so they just don't have the knowledge or the stats on how much that building will be and is used. And the, particularly if we put other community factors up within that, uh, space also. So I think that they're, uh.
Is there even more parking available?
Yeah, right. And I think if we could get usage of the, uh, grad center parking or get, you know, cause they seem to be using ours, but, um, you know, this, and I think that perhaps we have to look at definitely not allowing the kids to have to drive. But the teachers, she was premising, a lot of her report on the proximity to the metro station. And that's only coming from Arlington side, you know, you know, possibility, but we've got so many teachers living down Centerville and all, you know, they, it's, there isn't a public transportation for those folks. And then also just to make note for people that, uh, this co, uh, we're gonna start be, uh, busing the teachers for Mount Daniel now, starting this next week.
I think they started this week.
Yeah, it's gonna start this week, yeah.
Well, a little shout out to the Planning Commission who has unbelievable attendance at this.
We outnumber everybody.
Economic Working Group. Uh, so we have been quite, uh, we have fulfilled our promise to be really involved in this. Um, and, and, and really the sort of last thing I think I want to say is that, uh, we're trying to do a lot here as a city. Uh, I, I was sort of struck while I was listening to this saying, this is really, this is about the schools in particular. Most of the other discussions have been about the economic development. It's my own view that we're trying to be, we're, we're being a little ambitious here. We're trying to, to figure out how to develop 10 acres. We're trying to figure even where the locations are things. We're trying to figure out the feasibility of the high school. We're trying to figure out what services we need. Are we trying to be urban? Are we trying to be suburban? In conjunction with all of these other things. Uh, I personally am really concerned about trying to get this crammed into some November referendum. I think the time is of the essence, but to, and I have to see the end of, end result of this process. But just, it was just as I was watching this and thinking about all those unanswered questions and the fact that the community hasn't weighed in even on this. Uh, and we're already gonna be in, you know, June before we get some sort of results. I, my view is that it's a mistake if we're gonna try to go on that path and try to cram it in, cause I just, I just think there's too much going on here. Uh, so that's not, you know, an official position certainly by the city at this point, but it's just my own view of, you know, where we're, on the pace we're heading, so. We'll, we'll see how it all plays out. This, and we'll continue to give you updates on the Economic Working Group. I, I just, it's been a really excellent forum to hear really important ideas about this part of the, of the city, so. I, I've been really pleased with how it's, how it's worked and how it's been organized and run, so. All right, uh, unless anybody wants to say anything else on that, we'll move to the Planning Director's Report.
Let's see, looking at the back of your agenda, just wanted to highlight that there's a, if you haven't had a chance to look, there's a number of items coming up in June. Um, so on the 5th, we've got, um, a joint City Council Planning Commission, um, presentation on the Insight Project East Broad in Washington. Um, we also have 116 Great Falls coming back on the agenda and then the Railroad Cottages, a work session post. Uh, on June 10th, we do have an area plan meeting planned on that Saturday. And then on the second meeting on June 19th, we have, um, listed the speaker series. We've confirmed, uh, Four Square is coming in and talked to us about TDMs and their excellent group. I think they'll be very informative. And Founder's Way, which is, um, Mason Row, uh, we expect to, to have them on that night for a work session and that would be, um, joint with City Councils as well prior to that meeting. Um, and so, uh, we had attempted to schedule them in this month, but they, they weren't quite ready, um, based on some comments and feedback we were giving them. So, and they're looking for an amendment to that application, so.
I was gonna say, so they are gonna, they do have to get an amendment because there was a lot of community talk about that. And, you know, if they've taken a whole piece of their project out, it has to be amendment.
Yeah, we've, we've received an application request for an amendment to actually, uh, remove the hotel and, and put a 55 and older, um, residential units in there. I think there's 72 that they're proposing. And we've asked them to continue to look at some other. and we've asked them to continue to look at some other options and so forth, and then give us some more detail on their analysis to how they got to where they are, and vice versa on the hotel. So, anyway, they've provided a number of justification statements and so forth on those lines about the marketability of the hotel or the lack of, so at this point, that'll be coming forward, and be doing a joint presentation for both of you at the same time. It wasn't listed here, but that's, so something that transpired in the last week.
All right.
Do you know if they have any leads with the movie theater?
We've asked them to, they've reported to us that they're in the final stages of that, and so we've inquired as to some more information on that, and we expect that to be wrapped up along the timeframe of this application, amendment request, so in other words, you know, that was sort of a prerequisite that we were reporting back to them, that they're going to come forward with this request, we'd like to see that nailed down, and at least, anyway, and they've indicated they're very close to that.
All right, a couple of comments, real quick. The June 5th, the 116 Great Falls Street, we had a meeting with them a couple months ago, or a month or so ago, and we had, they had some real requirements that they were going to have to fulfill, and at that point, we had, they were trying to understand whether or not those, it was worth making those kind of investments that they were going to have to make, and I can't remember exactly what it was at this point. I assume they made those, spent the money required to bring this before us again, I mean, were we talking about the same thing again? I just want to make sure that we moved the ball forward, that's all.
A resubmission reflecting those at this point?
I can't remember what it was, does anyone remember?
It was like they had to file an additional application, and the fee was going to cost them.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was additional fee, I think, I'm not sure if they had actually filed technically for a conditional rezoning before, I think it was just a map rezoning change.
That's what it was.
So, I think it was that, and there may have been another piece to it that was sort of along the lines of, you know, filing the correct documents for what they're asking for at this point.
So, you're not sure if that's happened? I mean, do we know what we're talking about?
I don't believe, I don't believe it's happened, and I think it's continued to be on, you know, the schedule, and so there would be a point that we would pull it off if we don't have anything.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going over the same information, and if they're meeting, if they're continuing to advance the process, then I'm happy to talk about it. If we are not, if we have not moved forward, or things are looking the same, and they're asking, you know, the same questions again, can we please, you know, think about this in the same way we've been thinking about it, then I'm not interested in doing it again.
I don't think that was the intent, I think this was scheduled based on a recent schedule, you know, from last month, that we had used this date as a target to bring that application forward. I'm sure there's a deadline in which we need that material, and that's probably occurring the next week or so, otherwise that date will move, so.
All right, so, my other thought here, and I guess I'll talk to you guys, to the planning staff separately, I want to be thoughtful about this Railroad Cottages work session. This is a, an issue in the community that has generated a lot of attention, and I want to, I suspect there'll actually be people here to talk about it, I mean, I know it's not a public, it's not a public session, it's a work session, I just want to think about how that works, if there's people here who are wanting to make comments, and how we see that meeting going. I have some concerns about that, there has been, again, so, a lot of community interest, so it's just something that we just talk about and figure out how we're going to handle that issue.
Sure, okay.
On June 10th, I had mentioned before, I will not be able to attend, and there had been some other people who had mentioned they're not being able to attend, I know we talked about moving it, it sounds like this is now becoming more firm, so if people could, we need some participation from the Planning Commission, this is our, this is our meeting here, so, I can't make it, so please, somebody.
I can't make it either, I'm away that week.
So, just put it on your calendar and see if we can have some presence here, I think that's really important for the community.
I think we could talk about that when we talk to you about the agenda.
Yeah, that's fine.
Possibly, we can do that tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, because I know they were looking at a backup date, and I think we ran it by the manager, and I think there was other conflicts, and so I guess we need to balance that out. We were looking to push it back a week, but I think there was some, anyway, so.
Yeah, no, I, we had a long conversation about this last meeting, I just want to remind people, if it's still here on Saturday, on the 10th, I have an event I just simply cannot miss. And just as a sort of a precursor, I'm really disappointed to hear that we're going to get a significantly altered application from Founder's Way. Spent a lot of time on this project, and I think the hotel is an important element of it, I'm really curious to see what their justification is, but I thought that was a key part of what was approved, and important to activating the businesses that were going to be associated with this, so I'm disappointed this is coming back to us with such a significant revision, and 55 and older community, I got no problem with that per se, but in terms of activating that area, that's just really a different proposal than what we've heard before, so I hope the justification is good, I hope this has been well thought out, because I, we have wasted, previously I wouldn't have said wasted, but if we're coming back and starting over, then I'm concerned that we've wasted a lot of time on this, so.
I mean, I would say, I would say that the council and the staff has conveyed similar, and that's why we've delayed bringing it to work session, so they can look at it in some other aspects of the commercial pieces of it, because, I mean, we ran the numbers, and I think it was like 33 percent commercial on the original approval, and we're looking at dropping, you know, without that, below 20 percent, so that's a significant change.
Yeah, I was really a fan of what we were doing, so I was a big supporter, I know that wasn't everybody's opinion, but, you know, my interest is less as we're getting rid of the hotel.
Well, and I think it's really concerning, because if you look at the Lincoln Project, if you lose those big anchors, you have much difficulty filling the other retail spaces, and them having the grocery store, the organic grocery store on hold there has really limited their ability to fill the rest of those spaces, so now we have an apartment building, but without any of the revenue from the commercial side.
Right, right.
Which is just not, I mean, it's really concerning, and I think that Founder's Way only worked for me because you had the movie theater in the hotel, and they would, I think, pull in the rest of the retail based on that, and so if, I mean, we just can't build buildings where the retail's empty forever, well, not forever, but, and it is concerning, because I work in Old Town, I'm next to the Carla project, which is gigantic, it's anchored by the patent office, and they have not been able to fill most of the retail. Most of the retail spaces have now either become office with blinds shut on it, or they're just empty, and so it's.
Yeah, no, it's a shame.
I agree with you. Did you say this was coming back with an amendment or first reading?
It's an amendment, and you'll have a work session briefing next month, on the 19th.
I really, with that kind of change, I don't know why, it's not coming back with another first reading.
Well, no, it eventually would, but right now, it's just a briefing to introduce it next month. They were, we were originally trying to do it this month, but we were given them a lot of pushback, and so we didn't really want to bring it forward in the current state, so we've asked them to reassess and look at their commercial and so forth, so we've pushed it off a month, give some more time before we get into it formally.
You know, I've got to say that I'm feeling totally different about it.
Well, you'll get a full briefing and presentation on the 19th.
I would just say, I mean, this, you know, I'm sure that no one's more disappointed than the developer themselves. Coming back before a public process is the last thing any developer ever wants to do, ever, and so the fact that they're doing it means that there's probably some validity to the problems they've had, I don't know how many of those problems are their own fault or not, but I would just urge my colleagues on the commission not to prejudge before we hear all the details, there's been a lot of talk in the community, in newspapers and blogs, and I'd like, I, speaking for myself, I'd like to hear personally, straight from the horse's mouth, what is the current state of things over there in that property, and as opposed to all the stories I've heard, I would like to hear the truth, and let's go from there, so that's my two cents.
I think they were planning to just do a status update, to sort of address some of the recent issues as well with the council, I think they were going to appear maybe before the next meeting, just under the petition period, just to do a status update, but not really get into this amendment in any detail.
Okay, look, I mean, I think that's a really fair comment, to reserve judgment on it, I'm sure they have good justification, I'm not worried that they'll come in with a complete analysis of why, I just, the outcome is what's disappointing, that's all. I'm sure they've done their homework, and you're right, don't want to go through, don't want to deal with us, for sure. Okay, that's what I have to say about the future calendar, and we'll speak this week about.
Just one thought on the Founder's Way, one thing I'll be very interested to hear, if they do propose a 55 and older, is what type of amenities are they going to have that might be offered as well to be used by the public? Will they have a swimming pool? Will they have other features that might be part of an active 55 and over orientation that, as I say, could be made available to the public?
All right, great. All right, that concludes our meeting, go Wizards, we're adjourned.